I'll call the Land and Land Replanting Board meeting to order for January 4th, 2012. Happy New Year to everyone. I just want to point out for everyone's knowledge that this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, the front and the back of the room. If we need to evacuate in case of an emergency, I'd ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside and move away from the building. Don't come back in to our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. Like that, so are we going to please rise or point the lead to this American flag?
(inaudible)
Okay, our meetings are divided into two parts. First part is administrative board work where we get our business done and the second part, being the first Wednesday of the month, we hear new plans. This also being a little special, we have received bids, got a press proposal for third-party review of the Woodmont project. And that will be done under administrative board work. So, we have, we have a quorum. Let's see, Dana is traveling with business, all points Scott to vote for Dana and Laura is here and we're all here. And we have seven voting members since two of our ex-officios are absent, Tom and John. So, we proceed. First, we have two plans to sign. They're both from Chinburg Builders. One is a street discontinuance on tax map sixteen lots thirty-eight, sixty dash, thirty-eight and sixty-three. And the other is a lot line adjustment plan. That's also tax map sixteen lots thirty-eight and sixty-three. And John, have you got the info on that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first one was the discontinuance of the portion of Class Six Scobee Pond Road between Woods Ave and Brewster Road. This discontinuance is related to the, again, the conditionally approved lot line adjustment plan between the Waste Management Kenneth A. Lord and 2001 Trust and the Chinburg Builders and the conditionally approved Lord and Commons subdivision, Conservation subdivision. Just a little background, it was discovered during the design review phase of the Conservation subdivision that Scobee Pond Road had been discontinued, subject to gates and bars at the town meeting in 1932. Then 2001, town council was petitioned to completely discontinue and relinquish all public interest in an approximate four hundred and fifty-foot section of Scobee Pond Road and to convey by deed without covenants whatever interests the town may have in any portion of that roadway. So, again, the discontinuance of the Class Six portion of Scobee Pond Road is also a condition of the conditionally approved lot line adjustment between Waste Management and Kenneth Lord and Trust and Chinburg Builders. So, staff can report conditions of Resolution 2001, excuse me, 2011 dash zero-four have been fulfilled. Recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
Okay, a motion to sign, this is a street discontinuance plan.
Second.
Second by Lynn, a discussion by the board. Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions? And Chair votes affirmative, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the second plan to sign was, is a lot line adjustment, again, between Waste Management of New Hampshire, Chinburg Builders, excuse me, and, yeah, and Chinburg Builders. This was a conditionally approved on April thirteenth, 2011. Staff can report, again, conditions of the, of the approval have been fulfilled and recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn, a discussion by the board. Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative and motion carries. Those two plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight, Chair and the Secretary. Next, we have minor site plan reviews and this is a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yeah, it could have been just under discussions. Again, there's just two, two particular sites that staff wanted to bring the board up to speed on, one being 116 Rockingham Road. If the board recalls, that was a plan that was approved back in July of 2011. It was for the Angus Insurance Group. If you recall, it was-
Was it signed or something?
Yeah, it was signed. And again, what it was, it was a duplex, residential duplex. And what he will be doing is converting one side of the duplex to an insurance office as phase one and then second phase, he'll be converting the entire building into commercial offices out there. What he's come to staff with is, he'd like to, he's proposing a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot, one hundred and ninety-two square foot shed. Staff feels the proposal does not fall under the minor site plan criteria and staff recommends that the proposed change be handled administratively by staff. My understanding, he wants to construct that shed so he can start doing some, so he can store his things in the shed and start his renovations, so it's just one of those-
Shed permanent?
It will be.
Okay. The exterior of the property, any changes there?
Yeah, he's, he's, he's outside of the building setback and whatnot. And as far as the, what he is proposing art for the exterior, the shed is to be completed, constructed of frame construction. We'll have an exterior that is consistent with the existing commercial building, gray vinyl siding with white trim. Again, the dimension of the shed will be twelve feet by sixteen feet. It'll be providing electricity into the shed for lighting purposes only. The intended uses of, of the shed is for storage of personal and business property.
Okay, but the house itself, there's, there's no changes with-
No, there is not.
Okay.
No.
So it's just the shed is really what-
Correct.
Okay, how does the board feel? Do we want a public hearing on it or should we handle, be handled administratively with staff? I mean, there's, there's a statute that provides for minor site plan reviews like this. It does qualify administratively.
I agree.
Okay.
Staff.
Okay.
Yeah, staff.
Yep, that one will handle administratively. The second one is just, again, staff would like to bring the board up to speed. We had a meeting with the property manager of the Dairy Plaza over where fireworks company is, Ben Franklin's, used to be in that particular plaza. Again, what we had sat down to discuss was a thirty-two foot by thirty-two foot addition, basically a thousand twenty-four square feet onto the existing vacant space at the Plaza. Addition is to be used for storage. This particular proposal does fall within the minor site plan criteria and the proposal will be heard. Staff intends to, to go through the administrative review committee as authorized by the planning board. So again, we're just, this is just more or less to notify you that that's how we're going to proceed with that unless the board sees a need to, to go through a full site plan. But staff is pretty comfortable with it, it falling under the minor site plan. It's only a thousand square foot addition.
Yeah, plus both of these, we get to see the plans when they're completed anyway.
Correct. Yep.
Where are they putting the additions from?
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
Just to the rear, on the north side of the building, to the rear.
It's in the back, yeah.
Correct.
Is there any empty space in that plaza right now?
I believe there was.
Just about in the center of the building and this is where the addition would happen, behind that.
They wouldn't consider just using that empty space as-
No, it's part, it's for part of that space.
Oh, so they're taking over the empty space as well? That's my question.
They're looking to increase the storage area of that particular unit.
Okay, I guess I'm not-
Is it the fireworks people?
No, it is not.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's someone who's moving in there?
Yes.
Needs more space for storage than they have.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a driveway behind the building?
Yes, there is.
Are they gonna take it around the, or what effect will the shed have on that?
The addition won't encroach on the fire lane.
The adjacent structure bumps out and actually would, wouldn't be any further than the end of that building, so.
So, Mama Rosie's or whatever, it's a pasta place that's kind of pushed back on the end of that. Am I picturing this right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. On the right-hand side of Ben Franklin, there's a piece that's pushed back and you're saying it wouldn't stick out farther behind than that?
Correct.
I don't have a problem with them doing it administratively, but I mean, you, the plaza, but then you're gonna do it anyway.
Basically just bringing it to your attention.
Are we comfortable with the staffing administratively?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, next we have approval signing of minutes of December seventh, 2011 and December fourteenth, 2011. I'll take them separately in cases of any abstentions for someone who was not at the particular meeting.
Make a motion that we approve and authorize the Chair, I'm gonna say the Chair to sign the minutes of December seventh?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn for approval of the minutes of December seventh, 2011. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions?
Abstention.
Lynn abstains. And Chair votes affirmative and the minutes of December seventh, 2011 carry and-
Make a motion that we authorize the Secretary to sign the minutes of December seven, seven fourteenth, I'm sorry, fourteenth.
Okay.
What date, what date?
This is approval also.
Right. Approve and sign.
Okay, motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions?
Abstain.
Stain.
Scott and Chris abstain, they were not present. And Chair votes affirmative and the minutes of December fourteenth, 2011 are approved and will be signed, Secretary. Okay, Planning Board will publicly open and record proposals for third-party planning and engineering review services per RSA six, six seventy-six colon four B, proposed Woodmont Commons planned unit development, PUD master plan as part of the quality base selection process. And we've got ten proposals before us and Andre is the keeper of it at the moment.
Yes.
Maybe what you can do is just list the, the parties who have submitted and then, I guess, physically open it. There'll certainly be available for public review and there's also electronic copies that will be up, probably are up on our website.
No. No, they will, they went after they're open.
Will be.
After we open it, yeah.
After we open, yes.
So I figure that we just-
We will open, open them and then they can, they'll probably be there tomorrow morning. We have to give our IT people time to get stuff done.
Absolutely.
Okay, Andre.
Yeah, thank you. Just a brief recap, as the board knows, at the December fourteenth meeting, the board agreed to move forward with the RFP for the third-party review in accordance with the schedule that we have identified as part of the RFP is that we were going to advertise the, the RFP between, between the fourteenth and the, and today, basically. We did advertise in the Boston Globe, the Union Leader, the American Plant Association website, the northeast, northern New England, American Plant Association website, the New Hampshire LGC website, the Hampshire OEP, which is Office of Energy Planning website. As suggested by the applicant, we also advertised on the Congress for New Urbanism website as well as their Urban Land Institute website. So, the RFP proposal was shown on each one of those areas. So, we have received ten proposals and what I'll do is I'll open them up, identify who they are and then I believe the subcommittee that was established is Mary, Letha, Art and Rick.
And Scott is volunteer also.
Scott, okay.
So, so Mary, Letha, Rick and Scott.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll go through those. Just want to make sure which one is-
Feel like there should be somebody from Price Modern House here.
Oh, yeah, let's go to the drum roll.
We have two packages with the same group. All right, we received a proposal from Fougere Planning and Development, Inc.
How do you spell their, their first name?
That is spelled F-O-U-G-E-R-E and that's planning and development. And, uh-
Where are they based on?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. And they're based out of Milford, New Hampshire. And received one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven copies and a digital copy. And the proposal is up in envelope. This one's a little bit easier. This is Hawke Planning Resources. And that's spelled H-A-W-K, Planning Resources, out of Concord, New Hampshire. We have the digital copy and the cost estimate in a separate envelope. And we have the required seven copies. So that's Hawke Planning Associates, Hawke Planning Resources, Alice.
Doing some practice there.
All right, we have the cost proposal in a separate envelope. This is Howard slash Stein Hudson Associates, Inc. And their address is not on their logo, so. They're out of Boston, Mass.
What was her name again, Andre?
That was Howard slash Stein, S-T-E-I-N, dash Hudson Associates, Inc. Out of Boston, Mass.
Thank you.
And we have the required seven copies with the cost proposal separate and the digital copy. Brown Walker Planners, Brown Walker, that's B-R-O-W-N, Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R, Planners, Inc., out of Newburyport, Mass. Got the cost proposal separate. And the cost proposals here. And we have the seven required copies. This one is Resource Systems Group, out of Concord, New Hampshire, RSG. And their cost proposal. And CD is in here. I'm just gonna take out the CD. Actually, we've got to make sure that the CD's not in here. So they have a CD for the cost proposal as well. Sorry, I got that RSG Resource Systems Group. And we have the required seven copies, yep. And a digital copy.
Self-committee, I haven't read in like four days or something, I'm sorry.
This next group is N-I-T-S-C-H, I believe it's niche engineering, out of Boston, Mass. All right, we have the digital copy. Looking for their cost proposal. Here it is. The cost proposal separate. So we have the required seven copies, a digital copy and the cost proposal separate. Feels like Christmas all over again.
You're pretty good at that, Andre.
Usually I just have a frantic period of just tearing over the wrapping paper, but I'll just keep it in the wraps here.
You don't take the wrapping paper off carefully and fold it and use it for someone else next year?
That's right. He doesn't usually get out of presents. All right, we have the technical proposal on disc, the cost proposal in a separate envelope. And this is Shook Kelly, out of Charlotte, North Carolina.
Can you spell that, please?
That is spelled S-H zero, oh, oh, yeah, zero, zero. S-H-O-O-K, Kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y, out of Charlotte, North Carolina.
Not quite coast to coast yet, so.
And we have the required seven copies here. This one is Provan and Lober, Provan spelled P-R-O-V-A-N and Lober, L-O-R-B-E-R, Inc., out of Kentucket, New Hampshire. The CD is in here, which-
Andre, they're sent, they supposedly sent it electronically so that the cost was not on that CD.
Okay. They had sent a cost proposal and a CD. Unfortunately, the CD is inside the cost proposal, so-
And it has the costs on it as well.
Stay sealed.
We have the technical proposal on CD, the required seven proposals with, I'll take that right now from upside down here. A separate cost as well. All right, come in. And the last one is from Devine Millmet, Attorneys at Law, out of Manchester, New Hampshire.
Could you say that again, from who?
Devine, D-E-V-I-N-E, Millmet, M-I-L-L-I-M-E-T, out of Manchester, New Hampshire. We have the technical copy in digital format and the required seven copies and a separate cost proposal. And I believe that is it.
We're good. Short time.
The next part of that, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Would, obviously the sub, the subcommittee will need to meet. What staff have put together is a evaluation form. We used this in past master plan proposals, most recently for this past master plan evaluation, which we had eleven proposals, now we have ten. And, and so, I believe you have a draft before you. Well, the first part should be this sheet, it has two sheets on there. It has Woodmont Commons Review Proposal Evaluation with a second page that says Proposal Review Criteria. And I guess, obviously, this is staff's recommendation to the planning board as to how we can obviously move forward with the review of the, review of these proposals. Obviously, the weighted, the weights that we apply to experienced personnel, project approach, knowledge of innovative land use techniques, proposal format and quality, responsiveness to the RFP are weighted. And so, as the subcommittee reviews each of these proposals, obviously, they can use a scale of one to ten to evaluate how well they address those areas of their proposal. Gives us a means, obviously, we have a week to get this done. This would provide a means to get that done and evaluate and also help with the selection of narrowing down the field from ten to whatever the subcommittee recommends.
Because next week's meeting is, the planning board will discuss the subcommittee review of proposals and selection of consultant teams to interview for the third-party review process.
Correct. Correct.
So, I mean, we've got a very compressed timeline. I think it's gonna keep us busy at least the month of January so we can have someone that we're all comfortable with here, so.
So, again, this is a process that we used in the, in the past and so we are here recommending we move forward with that, with this proposal.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? Ari?
Yes.
Could you come to the microphone and just identify yourself on our records, please?
I'm Ari Pollock with Gallagher, Callahan and Gartrill here for the applicant this evening. We've heard all the openings. We simply want to alert the board that some of the firms that have been disclosed as supplying bids are known to us. We have some concern relating to conflicts. Some of the bid documents should relate to the work experiences and any interactions with the applicant or the applicant's owning, owning entities as part of the RFP request. So we'll need to dig into these at the same time as the subcommittee and make the board and staff aware of any potential conflicts that, that we see with those who have responded.
Yeah, because you can communicate with, with Andre.
Will do.
Yes. Okay, anyone else? We've got a lot of work to do.
We have a lot of work to do between now and next week and I believe Cynthia had put out a schedule as to a possible meeting date, I believe it's next Tuesday.
I don't think we addressed, I actually did. Next Tuesday.
So hopefully that, that works out if it needs to be sooner than, obviously, we can do that, but it at least allows everybody to enough time because as we, as we, and I looked at Letha, as we know that when we went through the master plan committee, we went through about eight hundred and eighty pages, I think it was. So it was a lot of reading, a lot of evaluation and I think it would give everybody adequate time to do that so it can come back with- So it was a lot of reading, a lot of evaluation, and I think it will give everybody adequate time to do that, so it can come back with a, with a reasonable uh scoring of the each proposal. And we'll obviously be ready for that, the next day, the Wednesday, to bring back a, at least a pared down list as to who we are seeking to interview.
Yes. Everyone prepared?
That sounds fine with me, if it sounds fine with the others.
Yeah. Tuesday.
What time Tuesday?
Um, I know that, I know that Art needs to come from Boston, get off the bus, so.
Yeah, but I'm not going to be on it, because we have four, so.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right, that's right.
I'd be a majority, that would be a, a, a meeting.
No, I think we're good, yeah, we're good, yeah, thank you. That's by that reminder, so.
So it's flexible with the.
So what we can do, we can arrange a time, and whatever time that we all select, and what we can do is we'll make sure that gets posted, so. The time and place of the meeting, everybody who wants to listen in can listen in.
Okay, any questions here, board? I probably don't know at the moment, I think mostly people.
I have a meeting in Concord that morning, so.
You know, I, something after three would be best for me, so. You know, I don't mind doing, you know, like, say, four, and then we have dinner or whatever and work through that. That would be fine with me if it works for you guys.
Four's fine, I'm, my schedule's flexible.
I don't know, I'm a town employee, I don't get out till five.
Well, since you're a town boy, you gotta be there.
It's part of your duties as a town employee.
Everybody else has a choice. So four o'clock, it works?
Yeah. Four's fine.
Four o'clock. All right, so we'll make sure that it gets posted, and we'll make sure that we'll have some, something there for the, for the group, since we're gonna, it's probably gonna be a long night.
Right, well.
Thank you all for volunteering to do this.
Yes.
I feel like you're sort of carrying the weight for all of us, and I appreciate it, so.
Question for the chairman.
Yes.
Your comment regarding having a majority there, so if another planning board member decides to attend as an audience member, we don't make.
You'd become a quorum.
We would.
Just by being there, yeah.
So we don't need them, we should definitely.
We should not be there.
So much on TV.
Yeah, we can watch it on TV, you can afterwards talk individually to the members, you know.
That's because I, I think it'll be a fairly efficient meeting, I mean, when we did this exercise with eleven proposals in master plan, we were done in less than an hour.
That's true.
A little over now, yeah, an hour and ten minutes.
When everybody reads the proposal, it makes it a lot easier, yeah.
I think that's the bottom line, you have to be prepared.
Not worried.
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask Letha to be chair of this group, if that's even necessary with only four people, but she did such a fabulous job as.
Look at her backing up.
Don't need it.
I don't want to put you on the spot or anything, but I just really do appreciate what you've already done, you know. In very short order have, you know, really cemented your place on the planning board. Nice job.
You've been through a very similar thing in the.
Right, I just think your experience would lend itself to you.
Compared to us, you get the wealth of experience, so.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
I concur, you did a fantastic job, and so, all right, so four o'clock, and uh, and uh, and much like we did with the master plan, obviously, staff will be reviewing this, but I believe that's the, scoring would be limited to the planning board, unless the planning board collectively will have our scores as one entity, even though that, you know, John, Cynthia, myself, and Janosch, we'll all review it, but you know, I guess I'll leave it up to the board. Obviously, we're five, the committee is four, we don't want to overstep our recommendations, whatever, but we will be there, we'll review them, we'll have our scores, and however the committee wants to use it, they can use that.
Yes, I mean, because even in the statute of the planning board is clearly.
Yeah.
The, you know, the driving factor of the whole thing, but certainly, staff and other input would be, would be welcome, you know. And I think a lot of it is the staff working with the planning board also. You know, the same way as with the master plan steering committee.
Correct. All right, so I'm wearing that word, next Tuesday at four o'clock, we'll be meeting, we'll get that posted up on the, on the board, as well as we'll get, we'll get these, the electronic version of these up on our website, so those that want to read them, we'll have access to them. And other than that, I don't, I think we've covered, I think we've covered all the bases there.
Yeah, I think we've.
At least until next week.
Yeah, till Tuesday, and then, because next week will be, will be busy. Right now, it's the only thing on the agenda, so. It'll be that way. Okay. Okay, go to discussion of the town staff.
Thank you. Yeah, we are too.
We are too, it's beyond, way beyond my expectation.
Well, people are hungry. And you have a terrific proposal, I mean, you have a proposal that they're looking forward to working with, I'm sure. You know, it's exciting. See you next week.
Be educational for all of us. Okay, yeah, next items is discussion with town staff, and this is an update on the master plan.
I don't know if you want to take this, or.
You start off, Lynn.
Okay. Let me go back to our selection process, I believe the board was made aware of the master plan selection process. We narrowed it down to a top five. The committee met in this room to interview each one of those five consultants, and ultimately came, came away with a recommendation, and I believe that recommendation, as, I believe is ratified by the, the sub, the master plan steering committee on the twenty eighth, was, will move forward with town planning and urban design collaborative. They are out of Tennessee with an office in Maine. I believe that the committee just thought that, you know, their, their proposal and the way they presented that proposal was well in line with what we're looking for with regard to our, our request for proposal. They just look like they're going to be, I should say, look like they're the, I think they're the right team for the job. So.
Any questions on board? Comments?
The only comment to say is I just concur with what Mary said, I think Letha did a fantastic job of guiding us through this process, and even down to the selection process that we had to use, and, and the rigidity of that process to make sure there's this clear, distinct, top, top tier group, mid tier, and then low tier, and, and made the decision very easy. So um, I guess I got to commend Letha for really keeping everybody on task and keeping the process worked, and I'm hoping that we have similar results with this process, time wise as well.
Yes, and I've heard good, good comments from the committee, steering committee, so.
Yeah, and I do got to commend the whole committee, I mean, they, they were committed, they all read through it, and all had, you know, offered their viewpoints with regard to each and every one of the proposals, so it was a collaborative effort, but it definitely led, led very well.
Okay, anything else, John, Cynthia?
I'm all set.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, board have anything?
Got a question.
Yes, Lynn.
Going back to the questions that were put out regarding Woodmont Orchards, the questions coming in from the public that are probably back in April, where do we stand on getting those?
Those are supposed to be put up on our website with.
The questions are put out there, but getting the answers put together with the questions, I don't know where we ever ended up, or what the discussion ended up, I thought we were going to be doing something like that, and I know nothing has been published as of yet.
Yeah, because I, I think when, I'm trying to think, because we had several workshop meetings on that, and I, and I, and I thought the board, and board can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought what we concluded is that some of the questions that we could answer were regarding to the process, the process part of it, I thought we did answer, or at least, at least had discussion on it, but there is some, there's a majority of the questions that were asked had to do with more of the technical aspects of the, of the project, and, and given the time, it hadn't been submitted.
Right.
It was just difficult to answer, because we don't know, whatever we answered could change when they did submit their application, so.
No, I understand that some of them couldn't be answered, and I don't have a problem with that, but I thought there were some that we could have addressed or that we were planning on addressing, I just don't know where we ended up with those.
Yeah, because I know we started down that track at one meeting, which, you know.
I think that was back in, back in April.
Yeah, I thought it was April.
Yeah, I think Tim was going to try to compile, but I think that's, you know, since Tim is no longer here, you know, maybe things had started, but not, not completed. I know the bulk of the questions, or at least eighty percent of them, were something the developer could answer, but probably didn't know because there was no, no concrete plant, there was no plan submitted at, at that time, so we really had nothing to work with, and I think a good part of the other questions the planning board dealt with, you know, if it is, is completed, but we can, we can go through and look at what, what we can, you know, respond to.
Yeah, because I would venture that, you know, as we get into the technical merits of the proposal, I mean, we can draw some of those questions as to, you know, some were, you know, some had to do with the, you know, the, the overall layout of the, of the plan, some had to do with the type of residential units that were being proposed, and, and I, and I still, still kind of grasping at how best to handle that, other than when we get to that point of the review process, we can maybe pull those questions out, and, and maybe some of this is going to be answered by, by the fact that this is the proposal saying, all right, there's, out of the thirteen hundred units, or whatever number of units that they have shown on their, on their proposal, X are going to be single family, X are going to be multifamily, or apartment style, or whatever, so maybe that addresses the concerns, and maybe that gets into other questions that say, well, maybe the mix can be a little bit better, you know, as we, as we create the master plan, so. Maybe we can handle it that way, as to when those issues come up, always have those questions in hand, and there's so many of them, it's going to be hard to, it's going to be hard to move forward with the application and address, you know, a thousand questions at the same time.
Do we rationalize the questions, because there was a lot of duplicate questions, or questions asked, asking the same information in different ways.
Yeah.
And I know that was one of the things that, that was going to be done, that, you know, staff was looking at rationalizing it into a cohesive list of questions, draw it down from the thousand, which many were, you know, asked, same question asked in a different.
Yeah, yeah, and.
Tim did put them in some very, really general buckets, three, really, really general buckets, so he did, he did take and make an attempt at skinning them down.
It wasn't, wasn't anything, as you go through it, wasn't anything consistent in how it, how it related.
Right, but he did try to remove the duplicates.
Duplicates, he did?
Yeah, or he put some effort into doing that.
And that would be good for the board to have again, and in light of the, and now having a proposal to go and fill it in.
May I just ask, are we, I'm sure there've been a lot of questions asked throughout this process, and I know we have one collection of them, but are, are, are they attributed to certain people that we could, it seems like so much has happened and so much has evolved, that it'd be a very difficult task to go back and look at all the questions and say, okay, well, what ones have been answered, what ones are going to be answered at a date in the future, whereas if we had a list of people that went with that list of questions, then perhaps it would be fair to get back to them and say, the best time to address these questions to the developers and the board will be at this point in the future, because we really haven't gotten there yet, and then maybe let the people who have submitted the questions determine for themselves what they still think is important to have answered, because otherwise, I think it's going to be an exercise in guessing what's still important and what's been adequately answered, which is going to be very hazy and difficult to do. So I, I think everyone's trying to not forget about that group of questions, because we don't want to be rude, because some citizens ask some questions, and I agree, but so much has happened and evolved, it just sounds like it might be better for the people who are interested in having their questions asked, to figure out which ones are still important and which ones have been answered to their satisfaction.
Yeah, I guess the only difficulty we have is that, is that a lot of the questions don't have names associated with it, there's a few, but not, not many.
That's, that's been one of the problems that I've had, along with some of Mr. Falvey's groups of questions, is I, I would, it would be more helpful to have, you know, we don't want to be pointing fingers at people, I hope people don't feel intimidated with having their name attached to, but even if Mr. Falvey has those names, if, I don't remember who's the only person involved with this list, but still, I think it would be helpful for the people who are interested to tell us if their questions have been answered.
I think it might be a worthwhile question to ask Mr. Falvey.
Yeah.
Can you revisit these and identify if they are still important? Respect, irrespective of that, he presented the list to us, as a public body, as a list of questions from concerned citizens, even if the only concerned citizen is him.
Sure, oh, absolutely, then maybe he can hone it down for us, I just, I think what you're suggesting you might try to do, which is go back, see which ones are still important, which ones may have been answered, and whether they've been answered satisfactorily, that just sounds like a, a task you might not ever be able to accomplish to the satisfaction of the people who wanted some of their questions answered, it just sounds like it might be a waste of time.
Or maybe something Jack kind of can handle, to put some, you know, coherence to it.
Well, back in April, Tim had done a PowerPoint that had all of the questions.
I, I have it somewhere, I have that, I remember that.
It's still on the website, okay, and there's only two pages or three pages that are directed towards the planning board, the rest are directed towards the developer. So I don't believe that it is our responsibility as a planning board to answer for the developer, I don't think we can.
No, we can't do that.
You know? So the ones that are directed towards us are, have to do with the PUD, what is, what actually is the definition of open space in this PUD? In this planned unit development? What is the concept and benefit to the town of Londonderry and its taxpayers for taking all of our zoning laws, which we all invested in, and allowing a developer to write his own zoning laws for our planning board?
Do you know how many of these we've answered in the course of the meetings we've had since that was submitted?
I would say that the, the three that are geared, you know, to us are answered already in any, in all of the minutes, because they have been asked again and again, and we have, you know, spoken about them again and again.
Lots at the periphery, which I know through the, you know, conceptual discussions, we're leaving a boundary of three, three rows of apple trees around the perimeter. The next.
And that could change.
Lots will be single family, one lot housing along that, so what it does is mirror what is, you know.
Across the street from them.
Next deck, across the street.
And, and the difficulty was, was some of the questions is, as we move forward with this PUD, we can find that it may be advantageous to change elements of that, because it's the board that ultimately has the, the authority to say, you know what, maybe we might want five apple trees in this area, because of X, Y, and Z are, are things to change, and it might generate more questions, but on the other hand, we're going to be working our way through this master plan to get it to, get it so it's in concert with our regulations, but in concert with the, with the overall master plan PUD concept, so.
Because even though there's the, there's regulations within the PUD, there's section two point eight, point eight, point one, point one, which refers everything to our master plan, site plan regulations, subdivision regulations, the focus master plan.
Yeah.
Up in the north part of town, so there's a relationship between what we have already in existence, plus what's in the PUD, so everything in that PUD has to relate to how we do things, how we operate.
So.
But we have to take into account, that's our responsibility.
I still think it would be worthwhile having the responses that we've had collated and put into that PowerPoint, so publicly responded to. As a planning board, we've had those questions asked of us, we may have answered them during meetings ad hoc, but there's a list that the responses could be plugged into, certainly for the ones that, you know, we've had jurisdiction of, and then we could ask, you know, during the process.
Okay, well.
For the developer to answer some of the other ones, so that they can be responded to.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think a perfectly adequate answer is, we can't answer it at this point in time because of this.
I think we've said that before too as well.
But to Chris's point, you know, to have them all collated in one place.
Because a lot of, we don't, we don't know the answer until we get through the master plan, you know, and that whole process, I think is going to, you know, a lot of the answers will be right, right there, but we can always keep an eye on whether questions here.
Absolutely.
And make sure that they are addressed.
So can you, can you just update the, the website to reflect what you just said? Can, can it be updated so that if somebody was to look back at those questions, it can say, answer it at such and such a meeting through the minutes, you know, something to refer to those questions, can you, can you add that onto the site?
No, I think as we go through the, no, because I'm sure with this, once we, you know, let's say, it has been accepted as complete, is, is probably a series of workshop sessions, which I'd like to have something not so formal as this, and I mean, Lynn's made some comments to me also, is the process and how, how we do it, because I think we're going to need several workshop sessions to get the details hashed out and the public, public input at the same time, so that we're working with the public, with the third party reviewer. and the public, public input at the same time, so that we're working with the public, with the third-party reviewer, uh, and probably more of an informal setup. 'Cause I know when we did the two thousand four master plan, two thousand three, uh, we had, well, we had one, I think, all-day meeting on a Saturday, uh, which I was surprised to be fairly well-attended. But worked well was evenings, I think we had several, uh, just meetings, you know, where we had, you know, broke into groups to work at, you know, you know, parts of it. And then at the end of the meeting, combine everything together and come up with kind of what the focus was, what people were saying. And it's gonna require like a facilitator, and I know we had a facilitator through that master planning process, which was the, uh, the, you know, the outfit that, uh, that worked with us. But something to think about between now and maybe next week on how to, uh, how, how we wanna approach this, because I think we want to get as much from the, the public on the design of this, uh, you know, what's, what's, what's gonna work. And I think one of the things we've.
And that's why I just find the difficulty and, and I guess, um, one to, um, to, um, I'm sorry. I keep, I'm knocking away from the mic.
Need the microphone close.
Is, is to, uh, as Mary suggested, uh, Maria suggested that, um, you know, we, we pull those elements out of the, um, out of the minutes as it relates to the question. You know, that, that task on top of the task ahead of us is gonna be very difficult, you know, to get done, you know, at the same time, uh, because we had a, almost a year worth of workshop meetings that, you know, a lot of things were answered and, and a lot of questions were answered. Then go back, knowing full well that once this application gets to a point where it can be accepted, it, it, it probably gonna be a, a whole body of new questions that are gonna be answered.
Right, I agree.
And, and therefore, we'll, we'll have answered the stuff a year ago, but yet there are new questions that have been answered. And, and maybe we can, at that point, pull those questions that are relevant, or the people who ask them can say, you know what, uh, how about this, how about that, and ask their questions.
I think those who ask the questions probably know anyway. And if something falls through the cracks, it's up, you know, I think they would bring it to our attention, uh, you know, at, at, at a public meeting, well, you know, looking for the answer. Or if they've forgotten the answer, if we've given it, it can always, it'd definitely be brought up again.
But we'll always have those questions here. I mean, um, you know, it's, it's, and I, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that just through the natural process of, of working through this, uh, PUD, a lot of those questions probably gonna be answered. I mean, it's gonna be asked and answered. Uh, but again, we'll, we'll have those here, and I'm, and I very sincerely hope that, you know, the people that ask them will say, you know, hold on a minute, you know, here's a question I had that's relevant to the topic that we may be dealing with at the ti- at the time, so we can address it directly.
In, in going through these, I'm sorry, Chris.
Well, the, the, to follow on from what you're saying there, Andre, I'm not expecting us to go through that and fill that next week. I'm expecting it to probably be added to, that we get some of these answers as they come through, but to start plugging things in there as they occur, so that we have responses in.
So like we had, we, we, I mean, 'cause like we, we got the questions here, and as we're going through it, you know, we can just kinda scan through and see what's in there.
If we answer one, then we, then we direct staff that that gets plugged into the, the publicly available listing of those questions, and it'd be addressed, that we keep that as a list on the side, say, okay, yes, we've answered that one. Let's pl- let's make that publicly available.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, this is a public forum though, and the questions can be asked in this public forum. So I guess what I'm struggling with is.
They were presented us, to us as in a document.
Yes.
And I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to respond to that document.
And you're suggesting not just a verbal response, but you're suggesting a written response.
Given to us in writing, I think we have to do it in writing back.
I think we do too.
So going back to this document that Tim prepared that's dated in April. Pages one, two, and three are for the planning board. Then I come to page twenty-three, that's the next planning board question, which is something that, so you can already go in and answer the ones that are in one, two, and three, because you know how open space is defined in the PUD. So, you know, that wouldn't be difficult for someone to go in and just edit this document, put that in there, done. Okay, but this question, has every member of the planning board read all the questions and comments submitted to date? So has everybody gone through this at one point, this PowerPoint presentation to, to read all those questions? Okay, so.
Well, I'm new to the board, so, I haven't seen that.
Veterans have, but.
Right, I'd like to see a copy of that.
Okay, well, it's online, so.
My knowledge has been, uh.
So in this particular instance, with this particular question, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get nitpicky, but I'm trying to understand the level at which you need, you think we need to respond. Written, okay, so in this particular example.
I don't think it's a legal incumbent upon us, I think it's a public, public facing thing to, to respond to those questions where we can. And to Lynn's point, the answer may be no answer.
Of course, but in this particular question that we were just talking about, where Maria says, well, you know, I, I have not, but the rest of us have, do we leave the question as is and say, okay, one has not, the others have? Do we come back to it and up, keep updating it?
Could you say full board members have? Because Maria is a alternate, so could you say all full?
But at what point are we gonna then update?
You don't have to update it, you've answered the question.
Yeah.
All right. Okay? The next question is, does every member of the planning board understand the requirements of the PUD ordinance that was enacted by the town last January? Do we have an understanding of it?
Are you gonna go through, how many questions are there?
There's like five that are planning, planning board ones, the rest are developer ones. So I don't think that it's, 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 you know, and I don't think we're not able to do the ones that are to the planning board. And I think if we can just take five minutes and do this, then this can be put to rest and we can feel comfortable with, you know.
Then when we actually get to do anything.
And that way she has it in this month's minutes, this week's minutes, today's minutes. And all I have to do is look at today's minutes and put the answers in.
Yeah, once we start reviewing the actual application, once it's, it's accepted, then those other questions can get asked and answered.
Those other questions are to the developer though, they're not to us, so at that point, that's, you know.
It's up to the developer to respond.
And, and, you know, if you.
And I think at least most of us are, regular members have been through this process when we started looking at the flexible industrial zone back in two thousand seven. And then, you know, you know, which didn't seem to work out for the landowners there, which we worked with their, two of the attorneys for, uh, Tamposi and King, you know, families. And then it really evolved, uh, you know, since it just wasn't, wasn't working, they were squabbling with each other. And that's when we started looking at campus-style, uh, PUD gateway. I think we looked at it as a PUD type of thing first, and then got into where we should put, um, uh, you know, our, you know, housing for people. I think the, what we didn't wanna put is housing down around the airport, but in other areas of town where it could work.
Yeah.
So a lot of, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine was involved with that. So I think those members that have been involved with that really, you know, have an intimate knowledge of what is, uh, is there, and they're probably, you know, appeal for it. But I think it, it probably takes several, several reading, readings through, and I think, you know, and even if we need a discussion with, with the board, because there's, there's a continuity to it. You can't take, take it apart, there's a continuity to it that relates to existing, uh, you know, regulations and, uh, you know, plans that we have in the way we have done business in the past, which that's what it tells me. So, you know, you just can't pull it apart and say, this is this. And you gotta relate it with the rest of it, and that's what we have to ensure that the third-party review understands that also. There's an interconnection about it, which I don't think most people realize or, or understand. It's, it's probably more subtle, but it's there.
And I think the benefit of, you know, our, our town is that we have all of videos on the demand. So if people do have an interest in seeing when this was proposed, when this was presented, and, you know, how we were educated, they could go through and just watch the videos and see it. Tim did a fabulous job, I thought, presenting the PUD, explaining it, and, you know, I think when we, we had questions, he was able to answer them. So for the next one, where it says, has every member of the planning board conducted research on PUD laws, existing PUDs themselves, and the effects, both positive and negative, on towns that have enacted such laws and allowed PUDs to be built? And was this research done before passing the Londonderry PUD law? Personally, I don't believe that's what a planning board member's job is. I believe that's what staff's job is.
Sounds like a job in itself.
Right.
Which, which, I mean, is conveyed to us.
Right.
And some of us individually have, have, have researched this. Uh, we've also attended the, uh, meetings that they had over at Woodmont to get familiar with it. And also, we've been through the, the Shret, talking with, there was a myriad of planners and engineers there. I know in Lynn, in your travels, you've, you've looked at.
Visited a few places.
And, and my travels I have also, and it just gives you ideas that maybe look good there, but, you know, you bring it back and say, what's gonna work here?
So I think the benefit of a planning board is that you have unique individuals that bring together their different perspectives and just, you know, and have discussions as, about that. But we hire professionals to do the research and to give us information as to what they believe would be the best for our town. And then, you know, we have the discussions and we come up with it. So, you know, that to me is not really a valid question.
Right, absolutely.
You know, anyway.
Well, you've just provided an answer.
I think you could answer it, Mary, you weren't quite.
Right, we have a certain role to play.
Probably trimmed the words down, but you pretty much answered it.
Right, okay. Right, and then, you know, I mean, many of us attended the Woodmont Orchard's Common Design Charettes. Not all of us, but many of us did. And we can't all attend things at the same time, because it's considered a meeting, you know? I mean, we had to, even when we saw each other, we'd stand at separate sides of the room for fear that people would think that we were in collusion or something here. So I, I just feel that these, and these can be answered very quickly and easily by staff.
And have, yeah.
Without taking a huge amount of time. I would not want to ask staff to research any of the other things that can't be answered quickly though.
And even as far as build-out, I think John Vogel did a build-out, oh, probably five, six years ago. And I think this, this would be under review also, 'cause I think at that time, a build-out was probably thirty-five, forty thousand people.
Thirty-one.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty-one, okay, okay. I remember, I think there was an earlier.
Based on existing, so, yeah.
I think the ninety-seven master plan, I think there was an estimate of something like that also.
Yeah.
That was looking at all the orchard land, if they converted into, you know, one acre, you know.
Exactly, based on the existing zoning at the time.
At that time.
Yeah.
And then we get to the developer again, so, so.
Makes sense.
So.
Anything else from the board?
Chris, do you have one thing, in light of the process that four of us are gonna go through next week, should we as a board look and revisit the ordinance and look at allowing more time, not obviously for this particular development, but for any subsequent developments, an additional buffer of time for this process to take place with the master plan?
I, I think we would have to consider that.
'Cause it seemed like.
I think we're gonna learn a lot through, going, going through this.
Seems like we got caught flat-footed in that, you know, we've got the normal timeline clock ticking from, you know, acceptance or having to accept the, the proposal, which is based on the site plan process. This is not a site plan, this is a master plan. It's substantially larger in scope and it's changing the zoning. You know, it, that's the purpose of the PUD is to have flexible zoning in there.
Zoning is in our, our hands, it's what we determine, it's not what, not what gets submitted to us, it's what we determine.
Ask the staff to look at what's a more reasonable timeline for us to have to go through this the next time.
Andre.
Actually, that's one of the questions that Town Council had asked, Art and I, to, to take a look at with regard to the PUD, is that obviously, once we have experience with this, we can be better, in a better position to enumerate those things that said, boy, you know what? Yeah, more time should be given up, or maybe more criteria should be added to, to, um, to, to give the board, or to give applicants a little bit more guidance as to how to go about this and the timeframes. Unfortunately, the statute is statute, you know, is that, you know, once you accept it, then those timeframes are there. But up to, up to acceptance, yeah, yeah. Up to acceptance, maybe, um, you know, maybe that scenario we can take a look at.
Hopefully up near the airport, so it'd be nice to have a little bit more time.
There you go.
That's up to you, you're the chair.
Anything else from the board? Okay, uh, we'll proceed with new plans, and since we don't have new plans tonight, and Mike Speltz wanted to talk to us about, uh, the Open Space Task Force findings. It's a perfect opportunity. So you have the floor, Mike, and we've had two people from the board that have been on the Open Space Task Force, and that's Lynn and Dana Coons, who's about here, and I sat in some of those meetings also for historical perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I had, we got at least one other member, Marty Strugis, back here that was serving on the task force with us. I guess for the record, my name is Mike Speltz, eighteen Sugar Plum Lane, and I was, I served as the chairman of the Open Space Task Force. Before I begin, I would note that, um, I hope that nobody on the anti-littering task force has seen the mess that Andre made back here.
He's gonna recycle all those papers.
So it's not technically littering yet.
Right.
If I leave it, yes, it would be.
And I'd like to remind Lisa that no good deed goes unpunished. So with that, I'm gonna, what you've done is asked for a drink of water, and I'm gonna turn a fire hose on you. Um, so the way I've structured this is to try to make it about thirty minutes of presentation, but I've interspersed sort of breaks in here to ask questions. So it's tried to, I'm trying to compromise between getting through this quickly and yet giving you a chance to, to react to it and, and ask questions. You know, if something is, is really burning, feel free to just interrupt me and, and I'll, we can try to deal with it. In addition to thanking all the members of the task force, including the ones in this room, we need to especially thank John Vogel, who did, uh, buying away the vast majority of the work on this report, which goes to close to a hundred pages, uh, and also to his comrade-in-arms, Jay Trotter, who served as our secretary and did all of the administration associated with the project. Next slide, please. So, uh, there's a, this caveat here is just to remind you that this, what we're presenting tonight is not the report. There's a great deal, more great factual information in the report. I've given you the, uh, web references, it's on our website, it's under the Conservation Commission page, if you're looking for it, and that's, that's probably a mistake, 'cause this, this project goes way beyond the Conservation Commission, and in fact, I'll warn you now that when we get to the end of this, we're gonna see a series of recommendations, five or six of which are, are gonna have to be led by the planning board. And I, and I hope that you'll pick up the gauntlet on that, and that's, quite honestly, the reason that I'm here tonight, is to get you interested in, in finding a way to help us out to implement this plan. A lot of great work went into it, but it was wasted time unless we actually do something with it. Next slide.
And Mike, I'm just wondering if, if you can request IT to put it on the front page of the, of the town website for the, you know, for a limited time, you know, a couple of months, so that, because it's such a new report, perhaps people will wanna see it. And that way they don't have to navigate through to try and find it.
Yeah, it's fine with me if it's, if we see what you can negotiate, I guess.
Yeah, we can ask that question.
Or, you know, maybe we can do a link or something to, to get it.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So about a year and a half ago, the Town Council passed a task force charge that created the Open Space Task Force, and, um, basically gave it that key mission there, which is to fulfill the master plan mandate, protecting the natural resources needed to sustain a livable Londonderry. They specified phases, almost like a scope of work, and what they wanted us to get done. And, um, we note that we're now in a master plan development cycle, so this work that was done by the Open Space Task Force will be very supportive of the development of the master plan. One of the things that they asked specifically was that we look at the economics of the open space plan, because it does involve, in some cases, purchases of interest in land, and that was an area that was, that was weak in our previous open space plan. Uh, and then finally, that last bullet there is, is important, focus on natural services. Um, there is a, or, a moral and an ethical argument to be made to protect open space for the sake of the other creatures that we inhabit the planet with. That is not the purpose of this plan, however noble that might be. Uh, this is strictly what's in it for us. So the, the basis of this plan is simply, what are those things that nature provides us that we want? Next slide. Next slide. Three things that, that we looked at that really weren't looked at as rigorously in previous open space plans is how much open space is enough. That's a question that's, that's been asked over, over the years in town, and, and when will we be done? When we have continuing requests for funding to support open space acquisitions, but, you know, is that going to go on forever? Is it like the road budget? Or, or is there an end to it? And so we have created a timeline to go with that. And then, can we afford it? Can we, can we raise the money to do the, the work that needs to be done? And we'll, we'll address that. So there's, there's three key assumptions here that you should keep in the back of your mind, and one I've already alluded to, and that is, as a town, I'm not talking about what a nonprofit would do, or a conservation land trust, but as a town, we conserve open space because it provides benefits and value to us, to Londonderry residents. And the plan to be successful needs to sustain those over the long term, meaning basically at build out. Right now, we get a lot of free natural benefits because we have landowners that have their land in open space, but we can't count on them doing that forever. And then, we obviously want to have as much of these benefits as we can at the least cost, so we're not going to get everything that we want. So the question is, where do we draw the line? How much is enough that's still sustainable? Next slide.
Yeah, because actually, I think probably about four or five years ago, I mean, because the town from like ninety-seven, I think when purchased development rights for the MAC property, has had a very aggressive program and probably has led, I think, the state as far as open state purchases, but it kind of coincided with the, as the economy, you know, deteriorated.
Right.
People didn't feel like spending, you know, bonding, you know, a million, two million a year, and it just seemed to come to an end. And I think a lot of it is how people feel about, you know, putting money into it, you know.
Right, right. And we'll talk about people's perceptions as, as part of it. In, in fact, depends on how you measure it. Londonderry does lead the state, I think, in the terms of total dollars committed, not in terms of do, total dollars per capita. There are smaller towns that have done more on a per capita basis, there are towns that have done a lot more acres, but in terms of total dollars, Art's exactly right, we, we did lead the state, at least for a while. This is a good news slide here, it says that over eight thousand acres of Londonderry is already protected in some fashion, about half of that permanently and half of it temporarily. And by temporarily, we mean, and you see it in red on the map there, land that is for the time being going to be safe from development or further development, such as the land that the school district owns, the land that the power lines own, land that's protected by our conservation overlay district or the state wetland statutes. Now, those rules could change, but for the time being, they're in place, and, and that land is, at least for the time being, protected. So, over a third of the town, or not quite a third of the town, is already protected. We are a long ways toward our goal of a sustainable open space infrastructure. Next slide. And you can see on the pie chart here where, where those come from, roughly speaking, a third is town control or ownership, a third is from others, and a third is from regulations that I just referred to. Next slide, please. Now, if we only look at the, the town part, and that's the, about twenty-eight hundred acres that, that the town controls, where did that come from? Well, you can see about a little less than half is town ownership, about a quarter is easements that the town holds, and then the other quarter is efforts from other peoples, a lot of that from the, the state level, for example, the mitigation that took place for the airport access road. Next slide, please. This slide shows you with, kind of chronologically, the bottom being the, the farthest, the longest to go, the musquash, and then moving up the slide into more recent time, the, the dollars that the town has invested in open space and the mix of town dollars versus other people's dollars, let's call it. So the, the other people's dollars are in green, that's what we like to see, and one of the stories you can see from this slide is that other people's dollars have become more scarce, as the economy that Art just alluded to has been biting away at the federal and state level, the support that we've been getting from federal and state grant programs has been falling. Next slide. The council asked us to take a, a careful look at stewardship, you know, we have these twenty-eight hundred acres of land that the town controls, what are we doing in terms of stewardship? And you can see that the responsibilities for stewardship are spread across a number of town agencies, and one of the things that we discovered is that there is no integrated plan, even though the town is the owner or the holder of easements on a lot of this land, we don't really have an integrated plan. The Conservation Commission does their thing, the Rec Department does their thing, the school district does their thing, and we haven't really worked together, and you'll see that in, in the recommendations a little bit later. Next slide, please. I, I know I'm tearing through this really fast, and, you know, if you want me to slow down.
There's only a few questions, just.
Let me know, but there are a couple of opportunities to ask questions here, as we, we're trying, I'm trying to get you through this first phase, which was the Town Council task of inventorying what we have. Before we talk about adding to our open spaces, what do we have already? How, how much have we got done?
And how do we take care of it?
And how do we take care of it, exactly. So, you'll see that in the, in the time since nineteen ninety-eight, which, you know, was fifteen, fourteen years or so, we've only invested a little over a thousand bucks a year at taking care of our open spaces. Actually, there's a lot more than that, because a lot of volunteer, an enormous amount of volunteer effort has gone into that, from Londonderry Trailways and from the Conservation Commission members going out monitoring easements, but we've definitely been doing stewardship on a, on a shoestring. Now, this doesn't include, in, in all fairness, some land that, money that we've spent on, with our, our town forester on creating a management plan, and then that, that is funded by wood that we take off of the, the land that we own, which it's, sort of pays for itself, but it, it doesn't bring in a lot of extra money. And the example up here is, is the musquash. If you haven't spent time out there, now's a good time to do it, I guarantee you there won't be any bugs out tonight.
I went out today.
Good for you.
I took the Boys Respect group out today, and we had a great, and I didn't get lost.
Good.
We had a great, we had a great hike, and the signs that we saw were fabulous, they directed me direct, you know, exactly where I needed to go.
Right, so each of those little green boxes up there are the signs that Mary's talking about, and, and they're there largely through the efforts of Londonderry Trailways, but done very professionally, it really, we have made it really very difficult to get lost out there now, as, as long as you can read.
Because last year I did get lost.
One foot in front of the other.
You always carry your compass.
Yeah, well, I, I ran out of power on my phone, I couldn't get GPS, couldn't get anything.
Well, there's not very good reception in the musquash in any event.
And I believe that the map of the musquash and those signs were completed by John as well.
That's right, absolutely true. And, and that is a, is a close up of a bigger map that also includes the, the trails that are behind this building, and the trails over on the, the MAC area, you know, to the west of Mammoth Road there, that we ski on in the wintertime. So, I mean, we are, obviously, we've made progress, but the question is, and, and the issue is, you know, couldn't we do a lot more with these assets that we have, with a fairly small investment, we hope? Next slide, please. So, this, this is a good place to stop and see if there's any other questions on, on our current situation, the, the current assets that we have and the effort that we're, that we've put into them. Okay, good, I'm going to press on, because I, I mean, you, you actually have an opportunity tonight to get home early, and I'm going to do my best to make sure that you do. So the next step then is, okay, that's, that's where we're at, we've said that we're, we're in this business for us, for purely selfish reasons, for the things that we want from nature, what are those things? So the group started with a longer list that, that John suggested to us, that we threw some things out, we added a few things in, and this is the list that we came up with, and I think it's pretty much in, in the order of importance that I'll talk about later. I won't go into all of these things, they, they ought to be fairly obvious, but the, the point is, we were very specific, it's not just a matter of having open space, it's, it's having open space for what? For these things, for, for clean water, for agricultural land, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide, please.
Well, I just, I'm sorry to keep commenting, but I'm glad to see that keeping natural views in their present form is only, is fourth and not lower, because I remember when I was on the open space task force with you, and that was a big concern about, you know, views.
Right.
Whether our view shed was important to us, and I, and I appreciate that you, you know, that your group felt that it was.
Well, don't, yes, it was certainly not just me, it was a, a voting scheme, and I'll cover that real quickly.
It was, it was the committee, and I think John put together a, you know, a thing to, you know.
A matrix, yeah.
You know, a whole matrix and everything. We polled people, you know, you know, that was done independently, there seemed to be a commonality of what people were looking for.
We used a technique called the Delphi technique, where everybody votes independently on these, on that list of values that I showed you. We say, you've got a dollar to spend, you can only spend a dollar, now how many cents do you want to put on each one of those? Did that independently, we compared the average scores to our own score, and where we were way out of line, we got to ask the other people, well, why were you so high in that when I was low? Or, and why did I merit that so high and nobody else did? And then we did the same thing again, and we quickly converged on, on the, the weighting scheme that is reflected in the data you're going to see. So, this is the point then, we know what we want, but how much of it do we want? And these are the sort of three things that, that we, we looked at, to figure out when we, we, when we have enough of something. And the first one, obviously, that it gives us what we're after, if we're after clean water, that we can ensure that we're going to have clean water, and that all the, all the properties that we don't protect, when, when they are developed, and they will be, that we will still have clean water. So it, it's, it's looking into the future. Then, that, and that, that's where we talk about being sustained over the long term, and the way we do that is by taking the, the key assets. All land is not created equal, there are some that's, that more, is more valuable, that, that, at least in terms of those things that we want from land, but if we don't buffer them, we'll lose them. A great example is a wetland. So, you know, a wetland does, does all kinds of good things, it cleans the water, it takes up nutrients, it filters out sediments, it's good habitat for animals, but if you, if you develop all the way around it, you'll lose the well. Fortunately, we have a conservation overlay district that does that for us, it doesn't necessarily mean buying property, but so just a way to illustrate what we're talking about in terms of having a buffer. And then, we also connected all those real high contributors of natural values into a, a single amoeba that you'll, you'll see in just a little bit. And the reason for that is so that plants and animals can, can both move, so when we have a, a, an outbreak of, of disease or, or insect infestation that kills a species off in one area of town, it's, it can be repopulated by some other area of town. So we have what we call hubs and spokes. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, the last bullet here, I think also important, it, it's important, I think, and we, we use the criteria ten to ten, ten minutes to ten acres, that, that everybody in town, no matter where they live, doesn't have to walk more than ten minutes, and, and we want them to walk, to get to at least ten acres of open space where they can do what Mary was doing today. Next slide, please.
Actually, Mike, one more thing that, that we added was the issue of providing connectivity between large open space areas throughout town.
Right, right.
And that's something that we didn't address in the first open space task force, but it was especially important to this particular group.
Right. So in other words, you have a, a piece of land that connects the musquash to something else, and in and of itself, it may not be that valuable, but the fact that it can provide that connectivity raises its value, and we gave, in the scoring system, some credit to that. I'm going to blaze through this next group of about eight slides. All this does is take those categories that I showed you of things that we want from open space, shows you on the map where they are in town, and shows you the measurements that we applied to find out where they are. So, this is where we get from the words to the map, it's, it's fine to say we're interested in drinking water, quality and quantity, but, but how do we get that? Well, we get that from aquifers, from wetland streams, community wells. Next slide. Same thing except, where do we get the flood storage from? Well, there it is, the floodplains, next. Agriculture land, and I'll, I'll point out here that New Hampshire imports ninety-five percent of what we eat, and we have a five-day supply on hand. So if, if you're comfortable with the good folks in California continuing to grow it and ship it, no matter the cost of jet fuel, you know, maybe that's okay, but this, this one is extremely important to me, that this, we are, we are running out, and it looks, when you look at Londonderry, like, jeez, we're in pretty good shape, but the fact is that most of their cultural land in New Hampshire is south and east of Manchester, and a little bit over in the Connecticut Valley. So, this is where it is. Next slide, please. These are the views that Mary was talking about, and this is a little GIS magic that John did here, but, you know, basically, the views occur from roads, and then the question is, you know, based on the landscape and where the ridges and the hills are, what can you see from the roads? And that's what you see on this map. Next slide. And I apologize for going through, I, I want to tell you that an enormous amount of John's work is represented in, in this set of slides that I am just casually blasting through, but, but it, it's, it's what's going to underlie everything that, that follows. So here we used a, a measure of forest blocks to get at two things, outdoor recreation and preserving the forest blocks themselves, which has a, a lot of benefits in terms of water, habitat, et cetera, but again, color coded, here they are, the, the, the purple ones are the big ones. Next slide. This is from the New Hampshire Fish and Games Wildlife Action Plan, it shows where the best habitats are in town. Next slide. Talked about scenic views, we have these great historical structures that we preserved, they wouldn't look nearly as good if we had a vinyl sided duplex on either side of them. So we, we gave credit to our historic structures and, and tried to make sure that we could have them preserved in a way that, that put them in a more natural setting. Next slide, please. Great blue heron here is emblematic of the fact that Londonderry has one of the biggest heron rookeries in southern New Hampshire, tucked away in the musquash. Next slide. So, we went through the process that I just described earlier, and we, we basically coalesced after two rounds of voting to the numbers that you saw there, so there, there's the way we spent our dollar, we put twenty-two point nine cents of it on the, the land that would get us good drinking water quality, we put four point five cents of it on floodplain, and you can, you know, go, go down the list. So, John then took that weighting scheme and applied it to every single acre of land in Londonderry, and came up with, the next slide, please, drum roll, this map, which actually doesn't come out as well on the projector as it, as it probably looks on paper, maybe it looks better on your computers, I hope it does, but the, the darker the green on this map, the more natural resource value it has. So what we then did was say, okay, how much of this is enough? How much can we afford to preserve, and how much are we going to have to just let be developed? Or become, you know, people's backyards? Obviously, a lot of it already is, and, and those backyards don't score as high. Next slide, please. So, what we have to do now is, is go from nature's boundaries, which we've been looking at so far, to man's boundaries, tax parcels, and what, we, we made some fairly arbitrary decisions here. First one is that any parcel that's less than eight acres in size, or it was eight acres or less in size, is, is something that, you know, it may have value, the, the yard, the house may be in the front, but there may be some of the value in the back, but, but basically, the preservation strategy for a parcel that's small is going to be education, it's just going to be trying interest landowners in doing the right thing with their lands. So we only looked at, at parcels that were eight acres greater in size, and then we drew a line around, and, and that's what you see in green there, the. And then, we drew a line around, and, and that's what you see in green there, the lighter green. The, the best. We just picked the best of the best. And based on that waiting scheme, we should've gotten the best of the water, and the best of the egg, and the best of the habitat, et cetera, et cetera. Then we added connections where, where we had to add, uh, connections. When we went through those parcels and said, okay, here's the tax parcels that get us what we need. Fortunately, uh, eight thousand acres has already, already been conserved, at least temporarily. Which are the parcels that are most important? And we prioritized them by threat, how developable are they? By cost, how much would it cost? And how much do they contribute in, in resource value? And then, uh, kinda look, I gotta check my notes here, 'cause Art, your head's right in front of the bottom bullet there. Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks. And, well, of the two hundred and ten parcels, there are sixty-two parcels that are zoned other than residential, mostly commercial or industrial. Those parcels, because we know we have a, an imbalance in town between residential and, and tax-positive properties, we decided we would only use a strategy of land use regulations, hope the planning board's listening here, to preserve the natural values on those parcels. And, and that left about a hundred and forty-eight to, to get the harder way. Next slide, please. You see that broken down here. So, there are about ten thousand tax parcels in London Dairy. About a quarter of those have some part of them in this green infrastructure, that line that we drew around, the, 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 the most important land. Of those, there are only three hundred and sixty-six that are greater than eight acres. So obviously, there's a, you know, almost twenty-two hundred that are just a, a house with a backyard on it. But that backyard backs up on a wetland, or on a stream, or on something that, that, that creates natural value for us, and that we have to work with the landlord to, to help him understand that. That leaves, then, uh, two hundred and ten parcels that don't have any development on them at all. And as I said, of those two hundred and ten, a hundred and forty-eight are zone residential. And there you see the, the breakup between what's high-cost, high-thrust. I mean, those, those fifty-five are the ones we, we really wanna go after, and, and that, that sort of block of four in the top left there. Next slide, please. And, and that, that list, parcel by parcel, all three hundred and, or two hundred and ten of them is, is in the report. It's available to you, uh, online. Uh, next slide, John. Questions on the highly technical part of the presentation? Okay. Have I, am I blowing this past you, or have you mystified, or is it, are we okay?
There's, there's a lot of work that's going on behind this, you know, with, with Mike, uh, I think John Vogel, while Jay Trati are putting it all together, uh, and also the, uh, the committee.
Yes. Yeah, there's, if you, if you have a chance, I encourage you to read the minutes, because the, the, the committee members came out with just a lot of great stuff that influenced this. But I do feel a bit like, you know, that scene in Wizard of Oz where they pulled back the curtain, and it's John that's back there, you know? But, but, you know, that's the nature of this.
I, I do have one question.
Yes.
Out of the two hundred and ten parcels that we're talking about, are any of those for sale at this time?
Um, actually, I know of one that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I would think that those would be the ones that you'd be most concerned about.
Right. Well, what we'd like to do is, uh, reach out to those two hundred and ten owners, or at least a hundred and forty-eight residential owners, and I think we should make the other sixty-two aware. Uh, and, and let, just let them know, because there's no taking here, there's no forced sales to the town, but let them know that if they ever wanna do something with their land, the town is interested. Ultimately, I'd like to make a market, so that people can compete, and, you know, we can minimize our own costs. Okay, on to the next slide. So the next phase is, so we now have defined what we want, we've defined where in town it is. Now, we're gonna take a step back and do another task that the, uh, tech, uh, town council gave us, which is to do what we call a SWOT analysis, to look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Um, and, and this goes to several pages. This was basically the result of a brainstorming session that the task force had. And, you know, these are just general, uh, descriptions. You'll have to, to read the report to, to get the full thing. But, but the point was, as we're doing this plan, to be aware of what these strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are. And the one thing I wanna point out to you is that the first item in all four categories is the same, geography. It is, it is both our curse and our blessing. Uh, because we are in the golden triangle between Highway Three and Highway ninety-three, and the, and the Manchester Airport, and one-eleven, uh, we are the most desirable, developable, uh, place in southern New Hampshire, uh, which makes it very hard to, to be able to protect our, our natural resources. On the other hand, you know, we have the, a geography that blesses us with some tremendous resources, you know, like, like the musquash, like the, the, we have, uh, a lot of fairly high-quality streams in town. Um, I, I don't have time to go into the work of the Environmental Baseline Study Committee, but their contribution is enormously important. And they documented the fact that right now, or at least at the time that they did their, their main work a few years ago, we were in good shape. We had, uh, clean water. And, um, even, even the, the noise pollution, and we have a light ordinance, so the light pollution, we've, we've got most of those things under control, and, and our task isn't really to keep them that way. We could spend a whole night on this slide, and, and we won't, but it's, it's one to, to come back to from time to time and, and to think about. Um, our next, uh, phase of the, of the task force's work was to conduct a public opinion survey. And this is a survey, uh, that is not a rigorous one. It was not a randomized survey. It, it was open to anyone who wanted to take it, so I suspect the people that took the survey were people that were very much interested in or opposed to open space, not necessarily a, a good statistical sample. Uh, however, I'll, I'll tell you that the Forest Society did a randomized sample of Manchester and the surrounding town to include London Dairy, and it, and it very much mirrored what, what we found in our survey. And I hope when we do our survey for the, uh, master plan, that we'll be able to cross-check, you know, some of our conclusions from this, and we'll, we'll get that way sort of three data points that give us a, you know, pretty comfortable feeling of where the town is at. Again, I'm not gonna go through all these slides. You can kinda look at the, the bold letters there to see what we're after. There are a few surprises, like the fact that, you know, we asked people, where do you, which, which open spaces that we have now, do you go out and enjoy? And, and, uh, we have a beautiful, uh, you know, two hundred acres down there in the south end of town that not a lot of people are aware of, and a lot of people use. So, that led us to some of our recommendations that fall under the, the general heading of, of communication and outreach, to make people more aware of, of what they, as taxpayers, have and can enjoy. And some other surprises, people use, you know, the, the trails in the town center, they use the gas line, they use the Presbyterian Church, which, by the way, has a development plan on it. But those are areas that people are, are using as open space now, even though, um, you know, they're not, they're not in the, in the town's resources right now. Asking them about conservation objectives, it was, you know, we showed them that list of objectives that I showed you in terms of the natural services we want, and in, in each case, they were all for them. And we, we did this in terms of, you know, more stewardship and things like that. Um, not surprising, people were all for spending money but not raising taxes. That's the summary, right? This is not a, a big surprise. Uh, so, so adding staff was not something they were interested in. But the, you know, as opposed to the task force goals, the, the people's goals focused on sensitive habitats, trails, and, you know, promoting location, they're kind of the recreation, uh, side of this. We asked them, do you wanna stop? You know, have we, have we done enough on, on, on protecting open space? And two-to-one margin, no. Don't stop. And then, you know, we asked them, do, you know, do you want to commit town resources? And that meant not only money, but, but staff time, uh, as well. And, and again, a, a strong indication that this, this was an important thing for people. Next slide. And that, now, this is where, this is where the, we, we have a bit of a dilemma. And the don't know is kinda like the political stuff that's going on right now in both Iowa and New Hampshire are gonna make a huge difference. People are split between, you know, are we doing enough stewardship, or should we be doing more? Uh, there's split between, are you willing to pay more in taxes than, than you are now, or not? And so, you know, it's, it's like a lot of issues, it's, it's up for grabs, and what we gotta do is, is try to find the, the middle ground. So we asked this question. You know, right now, we spend two point seven percent of our budget on conservation. Almost all of that is the principal and interest payments that we make on previous open space bonds. Is that the right amount? What percentage should we be spending? Most people said more than two percent, two point seven percent. But when you averaged what everybody said, it came out to two point seven percent. So we think, and the financial plan is based on this assumption, that we're at about the right place in terms of our, the effort that we devote to open space versus, you know, police, fire, education, all the other good things that the town has to do. Next slide, please. It doesn't seem like very much.
But Mike, if you're paying two point seven percent of the budget right now, just for debt, how does that allow you to buy anything new?
I'll show you that. Thank you. That's a great lead-in. What we're proposing is, is the steady-state approach here. So, uh, that we, uh, would continue this two point seven percent, what we call level of effort. Uh, and, and what that means is that as we pay bonds off, we would have the ability to initiate more bonds. Uh, now, this is gonna sound a lot like a discussion the council just had in terms of road bonds, if you were, if you were watching that. Uh, the difference here is that it doesn't go on forever. Next slide, please. So, uh, the black line on this chart is based on not issuing any more open space bonds. And over the years, by, uh, twenty twenty-five, or twenty, yeah, I guess twenty twenty-five, you're down to only having one, uh, bond left that you haven't paid off. If, as you pay those bonds off, you float additional bonds to protect additional open space, it'll put you on the purple line. Purple line is designed to not cross the nine hundred thousand dollar line that we're roughly at right now. We, we, in our last budget, we were at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand on the open space bonds. So, the idea is, if, if people are comfortable with that, which is kinda what the survey told us, then, you know, keep that level. Then what can we do? We assumed, based on advice from Sue Hickey, that a four percent interest rate was, was a fair one, and we, we looked at, at ten-year bonds. Obviously, if you went to twenty-year bonds, you could, you know, do additional ones, could you be, excuse me, paying less, but for a longer period of time. Next slide, please. So, this is the total amount of open space bonds that are either issued or to be issued. So, the five bars on the left are the bonds that we have already issued. So those are the ones we're paying interest on, that you saw on the, on the previous slide as a black line. As those bonds get paid off, so when the two thousand twelve bond gets paid off in two thousand thirteen, we can then issue a replacement bond for that. And, and so you'll see that there's a sort of a twenty-year lag, but each of those little bars over there, depending on whether the bond was floated for ten or fifteen or twenty years, has a corresponding bar, bar in the future. We didn't go beyond that because we don't think we have much more time than that. I hope I'm wrong. I hope London Dairy develops more slowly and we have more time. But we sort of took a conservative assumption here, and it is based on the CIP mass, the, the Capital Improvement Plan that's prepared for the master plan. And if you look at that, and you look at the population growth and the, and the time to build out, it says we have fifteen, twenty years. Obviously, that depends totally on what happens in the future, but that's our best guess today, so that was how we constrained ourselves. Next slide. So, those bars there said we have an additional bonding authority of seven million we can use over the next twenty, uh, twen- uh, actually, fifteen years. The assumption that the task force made before some recent developments was that the land use change tax would continue. That number represents the average amount of land use change tax multiplied by the fifteen years in, in the program. So that gives us about ten million to play with. Uh, over the years, we have been able to use about twenty-five percent of other people's money, federal grants, state grants, mitigation, one thing or another. So that gives us a total pot of about thirteen million dollars. If you look at those, uh, two hundred and ten parcels, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-eight parcels that are residential, and look at their assessed valuation, it comes to thirty-seven million dollars. So it would appear that we're raising thirteen million to solve a thirty-seven million dollar problem. One answer to that is, that's all we can afford, and, you know, that's a reasonable answer. But I think the situation is more optimistic than that, if you go to the next slide.
Mike, one question I had about the assessed values. A lot of these properties are assessed as agricultural.
Well, they were, they were assessed that they're ad valorem. I mean, we use the ad valorem numbers, not the, not the current use.
Okay, so that, it would be what their economic.
Yes, right. Their highest and best use, we call it.
All right.
Right. Good question. Of that thirty-six million, eight million is for parcels between eight and twenty acres. Just as I talked about parcels smaller than eight acres, many of these parcels, uh, the, the town shouldn't be buying, or shouldn't be buying, and maybe buying an easement on, but certainly not buying. And many of these parcels are, are already partially developed. I live over on the Sugar Plum Development, which is twenty acres, which is ten acres of open space. And that ten acres isn't going anywhere. The planning board, uh, you know, wouldn't permit it. That's all that's gonna go in there. So there's, there's no need to, you know, to protect that other piece that's in, in the, in the open space plan. The land is there, but the protection strategy is, okay, Sugar Plum condo association, take good care of it. Um, and, and that goes to the second point as well, that, you know, we, most of these, the value in most of these parcels that are small like this is in the part that's already built. You know, it's the Coke plant, it's the, um, the, the condos over on, um, across from Sugar Plum.
Century Village.
Century Village, right. So, there, I, I think that the thirty-six million is actually a much smaller number. That's a, very much a worse case. As I said, we, you know, looked at fifteen years as the, all the time we have. We may have twenty or twenty-five. If the economy stays like this, we might have thirty or thirty-five years. And, you know, I would hope that there will continue to be activity by, uh, other agencies, whether it's the Land Trust, like the Forest Society, or the state, uh, doing mitigation work in town, uh, or, you know, just other people that it can do, carry some of the load here for us. And then, let's admit it, we're gonna lose some. Woodmont is in the open space plan, 'cause it hasn't been developed yet. Uh, the Chinburg, uh, project up on the Lorden property is in the open space plan, except, well, those, you know, those valuations are gonna come out. They're, they're gone. So, I, I, I think that the, the, the dollars that we have in there, you know, the twelve million, if we can, uh, keep getting grants at the rate we have, and if we can keep the land use change tax, uh, supporting this plan, I think they're adequate to do what we will have the opportunity to do. Next slide. So, questions on that? Questions, comments?
So, the six hundred and fifty acres is not part of the two hundred and ten acres, then, that you would, that's high. The, the Woodmont is not, it's part of the two thousand acres, right, not part of the lower number?
The lower number is parcels?
Yeah.
It's parcels, it's not, is, is, is there, is that one of their?
That, that, that is in the green infrastructure right now.
Right.
And again, and it's there largely because of the agricultural soils, you know, and it isn't that you would need to protect every square inch of the property, and I hope as the process unfolds with them, that we will be able to protect the agricultural soils and let them do what they wanna do on the remainder of the property, or at least a good part of it. So your question about what is open space is very appropriate. Uh, other, other- Other, other questions on that part? I know it's, it's complicated and I threw a lot at you there, but again, I'm trying to get through this.
Following it.
Good.
You did a fabulous job.
Right. We're not done yet.
Still, still more.
In fact, this is the hard part for you guys. So, and this is, there's a bunch of, this is all word slides, and I'm not gonna go through all the words. But we grouped the recommendations into these seven categories. And we assigned, at least tentatively, a lead agency and, and supporting agencies for, for each of these. So, the, these are, these are, each of these has a conclusion and then a number of recommendations that, that derive from that conclusion. So, first slide, just as an example, education and outreach. I alluded to it a little bit earlier. You know, that we've, we, the conclusion is we've, we've done a lot. In fact, you know, we're way over halfway there in terms of, of acres and in terms, even farther in terms of natural resources that we want to protect. But, you know, we, we want to bring other people into it. So, there's a whole list of things there. And actually, we got a checkmark on one of those, thanks to the town council who initiated this project. Now, we have a refined set of guidelines on how the council and the Conservation Commission work together, basically creating a joint negotiating committee to, to do projects in the future. So, one of the recommendations has already been implemented. Thanks especially to Tom Frieda for that, for doing a lot of the drafting on that. Next slide. And I'm, I'm just gonna blow through these quickly because we see where it says in italics, "party responsible." And I, this, this one's about stewardship, but go to the next one.
And we're in red.
And you see the one in red there. That's right. So, and again, these are only recommendations, but I think they're at least worth considering. They're at, at least worth saying advisedly, thought about it, don't want to do it. Because intuitively, some of these things I think should be done. It's been 22 years since we had a hard engineering look at our water resources. I mean, what, what we did was, is useful in the plan, but it's not, it's not, you know, we're not hydrologists. So, it's time, I think, to get that plan out, update it, find out what it's gonna cost, let Letha read another vendor selection subcommittee to figure out who the lucky hydrologist is gonna be. And, and, and update that. And then that'll inform our plan. Land use regulations. We know we have a problem with flooding. We know the climate is changing. We know the flooding is going to get worse. So, we ought to take a look at our regulations to make sure that, that we aren't creating problems, that, whereas the bumper sticker would say, "No more Brook views." And then, the, the bottom one, I, I, I think I, is it the next slide?
Says investigate approaches to a no-nanual policy?
Do I have, is that that on the next slide, or is it farther?
We, we zipped by it, so I can, I can deck up.
I think it was, we already gone by it. So, it's kind of like, I think it was out of place, maybe in the, the sequence.
Impervious surface now?
Yeah, we, we zipped past it. I can, I can call it up again if you want to speak to it, Mike.
I, I'd like to, yeah. This is important.
Yes, there's a, a picture of the town on the right.
Yep, okay, good. So, we know that when impervious surface in a watershed exceeds 10%, water quality starts to be degraded. In London Dairy, those little yellow numbers with the circle around them represent the, the various watersheds that we have in town. And John was able to, with his GIS software, look at the amount of impervious surface in each of those watersheds. And the ones in red are above 10%. A couple of them by a little bit, number eight there, you know, the center of town with the, with the big parking lots, you know, with the shopping centers, a lot. So, we, I think, and I don't have real good answers for you, but we need to put some effort into figuring out a, some kind of planning guideline that keeps our, our watersheds that are still safe, safe. And we may need to go to some engineering solutions in the impacted watersheds to, to make sure that we don't degrade the, the good water quality that we have now. And you can see one obvious one there is, is the Woodmont development on the sort of north eastern corner, just to the right of the number eight there. That's where it is. It sits in that impacted watershed. So, as we work with that.
One of the questions I've had, have it going through what they've submitted, is how much impervious surface are they generating?
Right.
How much water, and it includes roofs also besides like parking lots. And where is that, how much water is being generated and where is it gonna go?
Right. And it's, you can, we, you know, the state already limits the amount of water, the rate at which water can, can leave a property. It limits now, in some cases, the, the total amount. In other words, it requires some recharge, so that, that's terrain specific. But what's dissolved in that water doesn't change. That's a problem. So, it's just, again, if we can switch back to the recommendations. So, it's, it's another thing that I.
Yeah, 'cause I think one thing is like our, you know, what we require for parking is usually in, in excess. You know, it's always been like that. I think we need to reexamine that and then really what's necessary for, for parking. And then, I think Stonyfield, some of their paving is the impervious type. Let's start to look at that.
It is, right. And, you know, part of, if you could, if you told Yanos that we can reduce his road reconstruction problem by 15% simply by taking two feet off of the sides, we would also reduce his funding problem and our impervious surface problem. So, there's all kinds of imaginative solutions. And, and all I'm doing is throwing down a gauntlet saying, pick it up and let 1,000 flowers bloom and think outside the box and figure out how we can solve a bunch of these problems at one time. Okay, next slide, please. And we see down there at the bottom, we have a lot of conditions on a lot of plans. And no real good controls except for an overworked staff that, that can get out and, and look at each of those containment structures, culverts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And let, you know, we need, we need to find a way to help get people on our side, to have them maintain their own stuff and understand that it's important to maintain their own stuff. And, and to sort of transition the staff from being a cop out there to catch you doing something wrong, to helping people do something right. So, again, it's something, that is a fairly low-cost thing that I think we could do. It fits in well with our recommendations on outreach and communication as well. Next slide, please. And is there, I don't think we nabbed you on this one, did we?
Uh-uh.
Those recommendations.
Next page, we get four.
Okay. All right. So, transfer development rights. This is a fairly complicated scheme, but it's something that, that might be useful for us. You take the, the, the value of the development rights and a parcel that, that you want to preserve because it's providing you good natural services, and you move that to a, a place in town that we wanted to see developed. Now, I won't go into the detail, but it's, it's a technique that is used across the country and I think in a few places in New Hampshire to help both developers and resource protection efforts at the same time. Helping the, the people get more involved with the DRC, and I'm not sure exactly how we do this, but I, I, I know that, you know, for instance, we were talking earlier about, about Woodmont. Well, it's been through DRC. There's a whole host of comments from, you know, all of the different boards that, that contribute to the DRC. You know, why couldn't people go there to see what, what those are? In addition to the ones that the good Mr. Falvey pulled together. Arguably, they ought to be at least as competent as, as those ones that he got.
Mike, have a question on the TDR.
Yes.
So, is the mechanism there that a developer that wants to do a higher density in a certain area, that we would like to see that happen, offsets that by purchasing an area where we do want to see conserved?
Right.
And easement into town?
Right, so the. Right, it, it takes the town out of the cash loop. So, it goes from the owner of the developed parcel to the owner of the undeveloped parcel. There's a lot of different variations in the scheme.
They're effectively buying the easement in order to get.
Right.
An acceptance for a high density elsewhere.
Yeah, that's, that's a fairly good way to, to look at it. So, where was I?
Sorry.
That's quite all right. This is important. Plan use development. We have good tools here. Hopefully, we'll learn to use them right, especially the conservation subdivision ordinance. We don't make that mandatory. Maybe for some parcels, we should. I know that was considered at one time.
It was, yes. And the deliberations of this probably, it probably goes back seven years or so now. We spent probably a couple of years in discussing it before we finally, you know, at least recommended the adoption.
Right.
To the town council. But it, it is a very important thing. And I think there was kind of like a, even with the planning board at that time, a struggle back, back and forth.
Right, right. So, maybe we'll take it out and look at it again, I guess, is.
But, but I mean, the whole, whole intent of like conservation subdivision and even a PUD is you want to concentrate, you know, your, your residential, you know, keep it dense, then use the good areas for the aesthetics and, you know, to give it the, much more of an aesthetic appeal as you go by. So, it looks like you have some woods and then you get the housing, you know, hidden back someplace.
And I mean, I mean, the, the trade-off amazed is less development cost to the developer, more resources for the town. You know, it just makes sense. So, you know, I, I think it, it's worth looking at again. An aquifer protection zone, that's the one that a lot of towns already have and, and we should have. We are aquifer disadvantaged in London Dairy. We don't have much in the way of aquifers. The ones that we do have, we built on, there's a few that are, that are safe that are left, and, and we, we need to get that in place. Unfortunately, one of them is up by the airport that we want to see developed. But if we, if we do it right, we could have it both ways, I think. So, that, that one, I hope will, I've been chasing Andre for that one for years. And in all fairness to him, he's had some other things on his plate, but that.
And that's what's gonna be coming next is, is the whole airport.
Yes, right. And I think having that in our pocket would be useful before we, because if the strategy, I mean, you, you saw on that, that map, you may have noticed that there's, that the, the airport area shows up as really dark green. There's great habitat up there. There's water up there. And we've said, no, we're not gonna buy that. We're not gonna necessarily buy an easement on that. We're gonna, we're gonna protect those resources through our land use regulations, our subdivision, our site plan regulations, our loaning regulations. So, let's put them in place so we can do that. That's, that's the argument here.
I think, Mike, what I would add is we heard from the survey and, and the public comments, there was a huge interest in preserving water quality in London Dairy. So, I, I think anything we can do to preserve water quality would, would be welcome. But with the, the, all the items on this list with the master plan coming up, that's the, the perfect opportunity to vet some of these ideas through the community and see what appetite there is for implementing maybe a TDR or strengthening the planned unit development ordinance.
Right.
So, I think the timing is just right to review some of these items and, and again, see what appetite there is for implementation.
I think I've kind of covered that bottom bullet already as I rambled along here. But did I just take a broad look at, at everything that, that we've got in terms of regulations to make sure that, that they're serving us well in terms of our effort to protect open space? It is much cheaper to protect open space with regulation than it is with, with our, with our dollars. On the other hand, we, we, we can't take, we can't, you know, reduce a landowner's land, his value unless there is a nexus of the public's interest with, with the regulation. And, and, you know, we can work hard, I think, to make those happen.
There's usually that, that give and take there.
Right.
I mean, we can always ask. You know, we can't, you know, the only way we're gonna get it is to, we'd have to compensate because they could claim us a taking. And there's strong case law or the state that protects property owner from takings.
Actually, there's strong case law both ways. It's, lawyers will disagree. And it depends a lot on the specifics of, of a situation. But the, the point is that you cannot compromise the public interest by promoting a private interest. And you can't, you know, at the same time, take from a private interest necessarily to promote the public interest. So, you gotta, you do have to find that balance. And, you know, we're in the process of doing that right now with the good folks at Woodmont, I think. Next slide, please. See, have we got any here? I think so. And I think the next is the next one, the final one? Yep. Okay, so, so the question is now, who's, on whose back is the monkey? We have a plan. It's full of recommendations that run across all of the, the boards and commissions in town. How do we go about implementing it? Who manages implementation? My first thought was, well, present it to the council and they'll pick up the ball and run with it. Well, I presented to them in August and that didn't happen. And in all fairness, you know, they've got a lot on their plate already. Why would I have asked them at the beginning of budget season to pick up another thing to do? So, I, my suggestion would be that we ask the hard-serving members of the open space task force to form a steering committee to oversee the implementation of this plan. We have representation on that task force from all of the boards and, and commissions in town now. Another possibility, sort of preferable from my selfish point of view, is we turn it over to the town staff and say, this is, this is what we want to do, get to work. They already have a lot on their plates. So, you know, there's not a real good answer for this. But at the same time, I, I think if we don't put somebody in charge, nothing's gonna happen. So, you know, I'm, I'm inviting your input here on, on how we would want to make this happen. You know, this is an open space plan and this is the planning board. So, it seems like there's some kind of connection there.
I mean, 'cause we do have a, a matrix from the 2004 master plan.
Right.
Not that we have everything done, but at least it's something we, we keep looking at.
Right, right. And that's the point, I think. We had the checker over there who was, you know.
Staff is, you know, keeps, keeps track of it.
Right.
Or once in a while, we go through it and say, oh gee, we haven't got this done yet.
And it isn't either or.
But that's probably a starting point is, is like, well, we should put together as a planning board what our duties are as, as a matrix and what we can do to make changes to subdivision, site plan regulations, and also what could be put into, you know, the master plan. Because the master plan is where we always get our, all the guidance from.
Right, right. And, yeah, clearly, that's the big 600-pound gorilla here is, you know, how does this fit into the master plan? So, the timing is great, you know, for this. And we intentionally did it this way. So, I'm really not looking for an answer tonight, but I, I hope that you don't just leave the question on the table. And, you know, I know staff is gonna probably have some input too, since it's their nights and weekends that we're playing with here. But I think maybe a, a staff lead with a supporting steering committee such as we, we're doing with the master plan might, you know, might, might be a way to, to tackle this. Again, I'm not looking for reaction, you know, tonight, but, but we, we need to answer this question one way or another.
Yeah, just one comment. As the planning board representative to the open space task force, I just wanted to thank Mike and John for the work that they did. You know, I, I learned a lot during the whole process. And I think, you know, we, we came up with some excellent ideas to benefit the town. I think to Mike's point though, that without some mechanism to keep this rolling, nothing's going to happen or, or little will happen. You know, and I support the forming of a steering committee. I, I think, working with staff. And I think, you know, under the guidance of a committee like that, we can make some good things happen.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think that keeps it alive and keeps, because you, you know, wherever things get implemented, you need those little reminders to them, you know? It's, you know, the things that got to get done. Even though things are busy, there'll be times when you can maybe, you know, put it in. And it's always gonna be in front of us of, of something we have to do. If it's not constantly in front of us, then it ends up not getting done.
Exactly.
As we all tend to operate, so.
And it's kind of like, you know, the, the 10 members of the planning board, there's strength in numbers too. So, if you have a lot of people involved, it's easier to keep the ball rolling than if you rely on one or two people.
Right, right. I think, you know, a lot of this stuff calls for a little, you know, subgroup, subcommittees, task forces, call them what you will, but, you know, we're, we're not gonna get it all done in an open session here. So, work behind the curtain that has to take place. I, I want to thank you for sitting in a hot, stuffy room for an hour and listening to this. I watched very carefully and nobody's eyes closed. I watched very carefully and nobody's eyes closed. That's an accomplishment. And I, I do sincerely thank you for your, for your interest and, and your time. And I hope that we can get your, your help in implementing some of the ideas in this.
Well, we certainly appreciate all of your efforts.
Yeah.
Because that's where a lot of it's come from, the conservation commission, staff, especially John Vogel, you know, Jay Trudy, and, and the committee, you know, the task force that really, I think, was well-involved and really had, I mean, it was a good brainstorming session, you know, where, you know, people were thinking. Sort of pontificating everything that was actually thinking going on, you know, it wouldn't hurt the town.
Thank you.
It's good to see it stay alive, too.
Yeah, I hope you will do something in the steering committee because it's so much work. It was really educational and it was so much work and clearly, you must have a bunch of passionate people and it's good to have those kind of people always just sticking the issue back in front of, like you said, a lot of people have a lot on their plates. And it's good to have people who are passionate about it and educated, as everyone who participated in this must have been, just keep sticking it in, in front of the people who are, who are working on all the other stuff so that it's always part of the decision-making process. And I like the little graphic with the apples and the, what do you call that part of the map? What do you call that thing? What do you call that thing?
The North Era?
Yes, with the apples. I like that, I think that's really cute.
And if I could just add, if, if, you know, as a subcommittee, if you take one piece at a time that you need to concentrate on and bring to the appropriate boards, it might get done slowly like that. You know, because you have an awful lot of information there, but of course, you got to tackle it one piece at a time. So, it'd probably be easier to, to work with that way.
Andre?
Yeah, I would just, I want to echo what, what Mike was saying with regard to the establishment of staff, I mean, of the, of a steering committee. But obviously, staff will be involved, I mean, with, with everything, CIP. We have a good amount of membership and, and commitment made by those, that group. But at the end of the day, it gets passed along to staff for integration and we recognize that. The only thing, you know, I, I would just caution, although it was mentioned, is that we are embarking on the master plan. And my guess is that a lot of the information contained in the open space plan will probably be integrated in the master plan. And then, an implementation matrix will be developed from there. And therefore, maybe some of the ideals that are contained in this plan will also be part of the implementation plan. So, you know, maybe the steering committee will be, will be in charge of maybe implementing that aspect, but maybe there might be some crossover with other avenues or other recommendations that come out of the master plan that could be, could be done. And, but, yeah, I just go back to our discussion earlier regarding a question that was asked regarding Woodmont. And so, well, how does this, how do these PUDs or whatever get started? Well, this is how we get started. I mean, the ideal is born in the master plan, whether it's an open space plan or a master plan, whatever. And then, we try to find that tool to use in order to bring about that recommendation. And that's how ordinance get developed. The open, I mean, the conservation overlay district was a recommendation out of the 99, 97 master plan. And we just tried to find the right tool to, to do it. And we found the right tool through trial and error, with 800 people breathing down our nets. But, but we found the, we found the answer. And it's the same, that holds true for every ordinance that we, or regulation that we pass in town in order to bring about a recommendation of a, of a long-term plan.
Because, I mean, in section five of our 2004 master plan, there's about a page, you know, on, you know, PUD-type.
That's right.
Development. And I think there's some mention of it also in the 97 master plan. But it was, I think, an area of discussion that we had with one of the focus groups on.
So, if a recommendation here is like an aquifer protection zone, we go out there and, and try to find that tool, best to carry that out. And, and then we bring it back here, we discuss it, we have workshops, we have public hearings. You know, it goes through here, it goes to the town council. And ultimately, what the end result is something that hopefully we're going to all agree achieves the desired goal.
Marty, do you have anything to add? Because Marty Surugus was a member of the task force also.
Martin Surugus, 17 Wimbledon Drive. I've been in town, well, it'll be 20 years this July. And I'd have to say, going through this task force, I learned more about Londonderry, its physical environment in this, in this session with the maps and everything else than in the previous 19 years that I've been living around here. Although I visited all sections of the town and I knew what, you know, these areas we're talking about, it, it really gave me a good insight into, into the physical aspects of Londonderry. But I, I think some people, one of the conclusions that, that, that I drew from this that is, it points from the evidence in the direction of concentrated housing with a lot of open space on the outside. Lorden Estates is obviously one of those that, that looks like that to me. I know people are not going to like this, but Woodmont to a certain extent will look like that to me because instead of spreading people all over town and developing everything, you're, you're putting it into a smaller area and you're also trying to keep it a bigger open space. I have to disagree a little bit with Mike on, on, on where it goes after this as far as the steering committee. I think this needs to go to the governing body of the town council as part of the yearly goals to set up for the subcommittees because all the other committees are an offshoot of the town council. And I think we have a lot of good recommendations, but the muscle behind that is the town council or even the annual meeting for the town. But I think the goals need to come out of the town council to say, okay, here's what we need to work on for the next couple of years. And a key component of it will be, I think, the conservation commission. One of the things that clearly came out of this was that stewardship and how to pay for it. As we clearly saw that they were not interested in spending more than the 2.7 to 3%. So, I think, and that's where this land use change tax is coming from. Somewhere we got to, before it changes completely, we got to think about that and say, okay, if all this land is going to come out of current use, we need to establish some kind of fund that will generate itself over years to generate enough money to pay for stewardship somewhere along the way because obviously, the town is resistant to a certain extent. And I think, you know, and as the, as the airport gets developed, same thing, is that we develop a, a trust fund of some kind or, you know, I don't know how you do it in the local government, but where the money sits and the interest that's spun off of it or, or other people contribute to it, that pays for the stewardship because that came clearly out. A lot of people in town don't know where this land is. On the other hand, there's a lot of people in town that they don't want people to know where this is. Because, again, you've got people walking through your areas that you don't know who they are and that kind of stuff. And you have that whole, whole issue of that. But anyway, those were some of the things that I was looking at that, that, that I took away from it. But it also answered one of the, a quick question for me. As, as a big newspaper reader in the early years of the town, I always saw those arguments about we're buying swampland and what's the value of that and everything else. Well, that answered my, the question of it, yes, they're valuable. We didn't just waste our money on that. They're a crucial part of the water flowing through the town to be able to get, you know, clean water, well water, the septic system. So, you know, it, it not turned me 180, but I understood now why we did certain things. And I think we did it right that way. It helped the town, as, as you said, on the, on the water study group, that it was the right thing we did, so. But those were kind of my observations.
Good, thanks. Anything else? Well, thank you very much, Mike. And I think we have our defined tasks for the planning board that we will, we will work at.
I, I think Marty's advice is worth considering, that we go to the town council and ask them to constitute a steering committee or at least, you know, approve the planning board constituting one.
Yeah, I think it is a good point because then it has, you know, I mean, they're basically the ones that can.
Yeah, the task force is a creature then.
Yeah.
We can work offline to figure out.
They'll, they'll be off of the, the one-time meetings through the budget is all set, so. Maybe if that's an opportunity, if we can approach them as a, as a group.
Thank you.
And thank you again.
Thank you, Mike.
Sean?
Yeah, all right, if I could just say one more thing. First of all, it really was the A-team who wrote this report. I thought it was, you know, again, Mike did an outstanding job as the chair. And it was educational experience for all of us. But the, the report, again, it's on the website, you'll see about putting it on the front page. It is 92 pages, so if you, if you hit print, be, be careful. But if, if you want more, there's, there's plenty more in this document. There's documentation of the, again, of the natural resources out there, little, little abstracts about what they are and what they mean to the town. There's also some information on the financial planning side of things and the, in terms of why we purchase easements versus why we purchase fee ownership in parcels. And that was a question that came up repeatedly through the, through the open space task force. So, we were very conscious to try and answer that question. There's also questions in here answered about how a property is, is purchased and what are the process? What, what process does it go through before a parcel is identified and ultimately purchased? We tried to explain that in this document as well. So, there's, there's a lot more in there than what we showed in the presentation. I encourage you to check it out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Board, have any other business?
I just wondered about the, John, about the, that John?
This John?
Yeah. About the parking lot that's in front of the Coke plant, there's another building there. Do you know what building I'm talking about, what company is there?
Maintenance facility for the bus station, bus car?
Across the street from the bus station.
Yeah, where the bus station exits.
What, why is, why are there always cars parked on the street and illegally parked, like?
Oh, they have seasonal employment.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about the Harrington building.
Yeah, that's mail order.
Correct.
They do seasonal employment out there, so Christmas time, that's when they're doing it. They hire a lot of people to fill orders.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering, is it, if that's, if we should just be asking them to use the parking lot across the street instead of?
It's not our land that's told to be used across the street.
Yeah, state property.
It's public, isn't it?
No, it's a state-owned property.
Yes, I think it's a contract between the state and the Boston Express that probably specifies who does what because I know they have to do all the maintenance, the state doesn't do the maintenance.
Right.
And I know they're pretty sensitive of parks there.
Well, as I travel, I'll see if seasonally there's still not, you know, because it just seemed like it was overabundance for quite a few months.
But, you know. There's a seasonal business, starting in October.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second by Lynn. All those in favor, or adjourned, signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.